I've got 6:30. Perfect. We'll go ahead and call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on December 2nd. Can we get a roll call, please?
Ahern.
Here.
Bathke.
Here.
Janiezer.
Here.
Mickelson.
Here.
Schmearbach.
Here.
Willer.
Here.
Yadi.
Here.
Great, okay. Next item is approval of the agenda. So if there is a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motions carried. Item number three is public comment on any topic not listed on the agenda tonight. All right. Item number four is a preliminary subdivision plat. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay, thank you. This is a preliminary subdivision plat on approximately six acres. Property is located on the south side of Remley Street. And Remley's not all the way completed, but so we have to imagine Remley Street being extended from its current west terminus. And the development directly to the east there was recently finished with respect to streets, so it's just not shown up on that aerial yet. Preliminary plat proposes 14 lots and public and private infrastructure. Seven lots are zoned RS6 and seven lots are zoned RD10. Oops.
Okay.
Okay, so this is a zoning map on the left, RS6 and RD10. Please keep in mind there was a small rezoning that was done recently. This commission recommended approval. The third reading is anticipated to be on the 12-9 council agenda. The comprehensive plan land use map is urban low intensity and urban high intensity. There were some minor changes. That has already been approved and that only requires one reading. And these were just those two areas that were changed, very minor in the subdivision, but it does require that formal action in order for this plat to be approved. So if it's on the same agenda as the third reading, we anticipate that it will. It would be placed after the third reading of the rezoning and there'd be a condition effective when the ordinance is recorded. Here's just a pretty basic layout, just extends Remley Street and the other street to the south and then tees in subdivision, but just in a grid-type pattern you could see there. So it's a pretty straightforward subdivision. Extends the subdivision improvements to the west, which is really the boundary of what the Hodg-Mickelson property is. So that's a natural progression of development that can continue west by that adjacent landowner. You can see they don't show any stormwater drainage improvements. Those will be created to the south in that master stormwater pond. Earlier this year, we did the rezoning for that property to the south in a very large stormwater basin, so that would accommodate that stormwater drainage in that location. We did have a virtual Good Neighbor Meeting on September 25th in conjunction with the rezoning. We didn't have anyone outside city staff or the applicant attend the meeting, and there's no objections to this request. We do have two findings, and staff recommends you accept those two findings and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Good evening. John Martin with MMS Consultants. No formal presentation. I'm available to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Any public comment? Okay. Any questions or comments?
Looks straightforward. Continuation of what the development is.
Consistent with the conflict.
Okay, well, if there's no other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that the Planning Commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary subdivision plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Great. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
May I clarify? Was that Zach? Was that your second? Thank you. Yadi.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Schmearbach.
Aye.
Mickelson.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Okay, great. Motion carries. And moving on to our next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision plat. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay, so this is the UCD preliminary plat. This is on 10.18 acres. This was recently, we had the rezoning to C3 and P. That was at the, I think it was at the October meeting, I believe. The commission recommended approval of that, and it's making its way now through city council. Again, third reading is anticipated to be on 12-9, next Tuesday. So the map is showing the C3 district as we anticipated to be approved. Certainly, it may not. But you are considering this request as if it's rezoned. So C3 on majority, and then there's the bump out at the southwest being P Public, which is really where the Muddy Creek is. And on the east side is the future land use map, the majority of the property, and this has already been changed, is urban high intensity for the most part. And then again, that bump out is POS, which is public, semi-public. I've kind of had to flip this a little bit, how it came in, but this is showing the preliminary plat. And then on the right side shows the lots as configured. It really, the development hasn't really, proposal hasn't changed. You have a private street on the east side. You have the lots that are just really would, each lot would contain one of the buildings and associated parking. So the development pattern generally is the same as you've seen in concepts. And you'll see that concept there in the middle, which hasn't changed. There's the grading on the east side. And on the bottom left, it's hard to see on this, but we did ask the developer for a landscape buffer on the east side of that parking lot. We looked at some of the grades and felt that headlights could negatively impact the neighbors to the east. So we requested that, and that has been provided, and that is incorporated into the preliminary Just to reiterate, we had a Good Neighbor Meeting on July 24th in conjunction with the rezoning. Summary of those requests are shown, really, I think, related to the rezoning and not necessarily the preliminary plat. We do have, although they're probably all-inclusive, I would assume, we do have one formal objection to the request. I sent out that link yesterday by Ms. Stoner, and she's in the audience here as well. So we do have two findings, and staff recommends you accept those two listed findings and forward the request to approve the preliminary plat for a six-lot subdivision on 10.18 acres to the city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Hello, everyone. Brandon Pratt, Lion Development Group. Don't have a presentation, but here to answer any questions if there is any. Thanks.
Okay, next, we will open up for public comment. And just a reminder that and we'll keep public comment to five minutes, so that if other people are interested in talking.
I actually have some questions, too, so maybe I can get answers, too. But first of all.
Sorry, just to clarify, so this portion is just for the, you can ask, you can make your comments and ask the questions, but it's just to kind of get your words out there first, so.
Okay, absolutely. I'll tell you what I think. Actually, I've discovered some things about planning I didn't know before, and maybe all of you know this, but this was news to me. The Lions Group actually submitted the plat approval that we're looking at right now before you even voted on it. Didn't know that was part of the game. Learning stuff every day. Really excited about that. There's always things. I also commented, as I'm sure you saw in my email, that I really thought that these things shouldn't be reviewed until the city council has approved them. And that's why I was so surprised to find out that actually the plats are turned in before you guys even vote. So that surprised me. All right, I had some questions about it, I was looking at the plat, and these are getting to be new to me, but I'm learning as I go. It said on here that the plat contains the floodplain. I was trying to find the floodplain on the plat. So I know I'm not supposed to ask any questions, but I would love for them to show us that on the plat. Also, I'd like to understand a little more about this buffering. You touched on it, but I didn't catch what you said. So if you could go over that again. I'm wondering if that's like a fence, a high fence to prevent the light to come through? I've found bushes and trees don't really hold up well in the winter for blocking light. They do pretty well in the summer, but not in the winter. Also, it said the zoning of this area is supposed to be marked on here, too. What it was, what it is, because it isn't yet. And also, I wanted to understand a little more of what Brandon Pratt hit on before about the blue line, things that are handled by the DNR, and how those are things that he doesn't impact or do anything with. But I'm guessing the DNR must have some kind of input on it if, you know, if builders and the city doesn't do that. So those are my four questions. So if you could pull those answers out, that'd be great. I'll sit down and be quiet.
Great. Any other public comment? Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? Russ, do you want to, so that landscape buffer, is landscape buffer, is that right?
Yeah.
Describe that more for us.
Yeah, I mean, we will.
What does the code require, first of all?
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's adjacent to a railroad, and so doesn't require anything because it's not a budding, you know, residential. So that's why we wanted to get it on the plat. I would envision a hedgerow along there and then in the landscape islands, trees throughout that area. I certainly understand just being deciduous in nature, they could drop their leaves, so but I don't envision. So long-windedly, we will review that in close detail with the construction plans and see exactly what type their plannings are. And just to reiterate, we have typically zoning, preliminary plat, and then subsequent to the preliminary plat is development of construction plans, which will have all of those details. This compels them to put those, requires that to be on the construction plans. And then subsequently is construction, and then final plat. There's not, I'm not sure how much public improvements there are to dedicate on this one, so the first four are really what we would anticipate. So, sorry, kind of rambled there.
So just to kind of clarify and, I don't know, review, we voted on the rezoning of the slab of land, and then, you know, they've shown us what they would like to do with that, but it was focused solely on the slab of land. And then now we're looking at taking that land and dividing it into different lots, and that's what we're voting on tonight. And in the future, there will be another vote on what they want to put on the land?
Right. So, yeah, separately, there will be a preliminary site plan required for each building, as well as the horizontal improvements, like the parking lots and landscape areas and things like that. They'll need to come separately as each building is built. I think they anticipate to build one at a time, each of those. I mean, they could come in with all of them at once, or they could come in with one at a time.
Okay. All right, so then tonight, just voting on splitting up the lots?
Yes. So you're, what you're voting on is, does the, does this preliminary plat conform to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance? Staff believes it does, and that's what you're voting on.
And then with the hedgerow, I think it would be nice for the residents that live on Stewart Street if we could do some combination, I know we're not there yet, but just some combination of like evergreen and of like a wood fence or solid fence, so that you get just that double layer and make sure that those lights are staying out of residents' houses and yards and their eyes, and so.
One of the comments from the public input was about the stormwater detention. Can you just, very high level, summarize for me again how this subdivision impacts any of that, or is it accounted for, or was it accounted for already?
Yeah, so there is an area that's in the designated flood hazard area, the southwest portion of the property. The plan is to fill that property out of the floodplain. And so it would no longer, and then do what we call a letter of map amendment, so it's no longer in the floodplain. That's totally legal to do per our ordinances. And the stormwater detention area would be, there's two of them, west of those two most vertical buildings, kind of in the middle, the ones that are oriented north-south. You see a small area to the west of those two buildings. The stormwater would be collected in that area. That pond fills up and ultimately discharges into the Muddy Creek. Currently, everything just flowed from the previous site. Now it's pretty much, the concrete's been removed, but everything just kind of sheet flowed right into the Muddy Creek without any kind of pretreatment.
Yeah, I was looking closely at the topo and to the water-holding ponds there, and it looks very significant to hold a lot of water that comes sheet draining off right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And with respect to the blue line, I think it was, that's a DNR, so that would be the Muddy Creek. There was also an area that's on UCD Central, which is not part of this request, but basically the water flows from the Liberty Center Pond through this development to the Muddy Creek.
Any other?
I don't have any other questions.
Do we think we get all her questions answered? That's the only thing I want to make sure we missed.
I think the DNR one was the only one I wasn't sure, but I think we kind of just covered that.
Okay.
I thought so.
Yeah. And again, I guess the other comment that was raised was just about the fact that we're voting on the preliminary plat prior to the rezoning being.
Yeah, and I provided some explanation in my response. You're in, your position here is advisory, you're not making any final action. Your recommendation would go forward to city council, and, you know, there's some risk by the developer to do this. You know, if the rezoning gets denied, then the preliminary plat gets denied, and they've spent that money to do that, and that's just how it goes. So, yeah, this action would again be placed after the third reading of the rezoning, and then in the resolution approving the preliminary plat, we would have an effective when the rezoning ordinance gets recorded, so the zoning would be final.
Yeah. And so I guess the way that I'm just kind of thinking about is this is like hypothetical based on that rezoning
Correct.
being done. So, you know, whether this is voted on today versus after the zoning, it, the preliminary plat's already even made and drawn up and available, so it's not changing whether or not city council is going to do anything with that.
Yeah, and so the, while the Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board, it's a necessary component of any action that's going to be taken by the council. And so the commission having a report and an opinion is a necessary antecedent of the, a condition for the council to take action or to hold meetings, depending on the context of what's being done. So, but it's not out of the ordinary to have things queued up.
Efficient business.
Yeah.
Well, it can be, unless it, unless it isn't, as Russ was saying. So there is, that's an element of risk of lost time and lost effort if it does get derailed. But that's not for anyone here to worry about. What you got is what's in front of you and whether it satisfies the criteria that are listed in the subdivision ordinance.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to have a motion.
Yeah, I'll move that the Planning Commission accept the two listed findings and forward the preliminary subdivision plat to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
And I'll second that motion.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mickelson.
Aye.
Yadi.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Ahern.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Schmearbach.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on to item number six, which is another preliminary site plan. We'll start with a staff presentation.
Okay, so this is on, this is part of the Sunset Prairie development. This is a preliminary site plan on 3.22 acres. It's a little, again, this is another one that's a little early in the process, but it's on the east side of South Dubuque Street, approximately 0.37 miles south of Juniper Street. Site plan proposes 32 townhouse units in a mix of three or four buildings. The one thing I will note with this is we can't issue, so the way the order of preliminary site plans is preliminary site plans are approved, recommended for approval by this commission and by our, by our city council, and that's for the preliminary. And then the construction plans are reviewed administratively by city staff. We cannot issue final construction plan approval until the plat is recorded. But the idea is that they would like to see if there are some things that they can basically get layouts approved to incorporate into their subdivision plans, and we've done that as well. Property is zoned RM12. And then the future land use map is urban medium intensity. And here's just a couple layouts. It's a pretty straightforward development. The road to the, to the north of this property would be Seven Oaks Boulevard. That would be the main entrance to the development. There would be a future roundabout in that location funded by the developer that we negotiated. And so this is just really that initial piece where there's access to utilities and things like that. We had, in conjunction with the overall rezoning and the subdivision layout, we had two Good Neighbor Meetings on March 12th and March 26th, and the input received, I think, guided some of the changes that you're seeing in there. In fact, the frontage was, I think, initially proposed to be a much higher density, and that density was reduced to like an RM12 and an RM14. And there are no objections to this request. We do have one finding achieves consistency with approval standards, and staff recommends you accept that listed finding and forward the request to city council with a recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation?
No formal presentation. I would just add to touch on Russ's point, again, part of the motivation behind the preliminary site plan right now is to allow for the design of those private streets and some of the private infrastructure improvements such that they could be constructed at the same time as the public improvements. And then that allows subsequently for some of these units, especially right out at the, it's been described, I know referenced by P&amp;Z Commission and by council, is one of the gateways and entry points to the city of North Liberty. So this will help facilitate the ability to get some of those units constructed upfront right at the main entrance earlier on in the process, once the final plat is approved, as Russ said. The other thing I would add, the pictures that you see in the packet that were included in the packet, they're pictures of existing units, similar units of St. Andrews Drive. The Watts Group wanted to, to make sure that everybody understood that that's one unit. They plan to have a mix of the materials, how the, how the masonry is incorporated in different units along, along the street frontage and color palette and materials and some of those things. They want to provide variety to make sure that, again, it's a nice, attractive entryway into the city. And I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Neglected dimension, too, there's, per the subdivision ordinance, if you have residential property adjacent to a arterial street, there is a 20-foot landscape buffer along that frontage. We had MMS draw that in there just to incorporate. So just kind of think in terms of how nice North Liberty Road looks with that landscape buffer on there, so that's actually a code requirement.
Great. Any public comment? Okay. Questions or comments?
I do have, Seven Oaks is, is that the north-south, does that exist at North-South Street now?
Yeah, well, it's in the, it's in the Green Belt subdivision, so the Green Belt subdivision, it stubs
Okay.
down, and yes, and this will make its way south and curve
Okay.
and then join in. We do have, again, another thing we worked with the developer on, an eight-foot-wide trail on the west side of Seven Oaks, so that'll continue up to the new infrastructure that was built up there, making those connections up there as well.
So that's where the public utilities will come from, is the extension of Seven Oaks?
We have public utilities coming down. Do we have, we have water and sewer down Dubuque Street, correct?
We've got water on Dubuque Street, and then sewer is going to the east.
Thank you.
To those connections.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I'm glad to hear you talked about potential future roundabout there.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a difficult place to come out of.
Well, we think
Especially when the high school's getting
Yeah, we think there'll be a fair amount of traffic coming through there. We'll have one at Tartan, which will be a little bit to the south as well.
Okay.
But we thought that was important. You know, we do think, you know, right now, the intersection of Dubuque and Juniper is really busy just because there's no
Yeah.
other way to go. But what we think and some of the traffic analysis looked at is that'll take pressure off of that intersection, because a lot of people, once Tartan is connected, will be using Tartan, and then I think a lot of people will come down to that Seven Oaks or, and having a roundabout there just makes things move a lot faster.
Thirty-four consecutive roundabouts.
I was just gonna say.
Juniper is not, Juniper will get one, or Juniper is not?
We're still looking at that. We're still wondering, you know, now we think if Tartan and Seven Oaks have a roundabout, and so we're at, we're asking those additional questions, if that relieves the pressure on Juniper that perhaps we don't need that roundabout in that location.
And if it doesn't, then you would consider it.
Pardon?
If it doesn't relieve it, then you would consider it.
Yeah, I mean, we have it as part of, we have a grant in 2029 to do a surface overlay of Dubuque Street, and we have it shown in that plan. We weren't, we weren't really planning on this development to come through, but that's changed. And so we're just kind of looking at mixing some things around, but certainly, I think we would, we would look to do that analysis, and we've got a couple of years to, if we determine, we'll analyze it first, and if we think we're going to need it, we'll just build it with that resurfacing project.
And as, just part of this project, that Seven Oaks, you don't have to get up, I just, but you, Seven Oaks is going to connect as part of this initial phase, or is that, will it just be stubbed in there at the
It is, so the, the construction plans that we submitted, we've already started, based on the approved preliminary plat, we submitted construction plans, and I think they're under, in the process of being the initial review. It actually would provide a connection for Seven Oaks all the way from Green Belt all the way down to Dubuque Street. And to clarify, just to add to Russ's point, what's depicted for Seven Oaks right now, given the timing of the roundabout construction at that location
Sure.
and the desire to do a decorative entrance, similar in nature to the one entering Arlington Ridge at Juniper by the developer, there's a question as far as the timing of what that looks like.
Sure.
Avoiding as much removal or any removals as possible. So right now, it's depicted as just a temporary connection to allow access, to make sure that there's traffic access there.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Got to look at a map to see where it targets. Okay. Any other questions? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Sure. I move that the Planning Commission accept a listed finding and forward the preliminary site plan to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
All right, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Ahern.
Aye.
Willer.
Aye.
Schmearbach.
Aye.
Mickelson.
Aye.
Bathke.
Aye.
Janiezer.
Aye.
Yadi.
Aye. Just trying to remember if I forgot public comment on that one. Paying attention.
You asked.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, up next, motion carries. So up next is approval of previous minutes. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the previous minutes.
And the second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Great. Previous minutes, or approve, motion carries. Item number eight, planning updates.
Yeah, I mean, it's, we've got two items planned for January. Can't believe it's almost 2026. That's crazy. It's been a super busy year for us, and so, yeah, we anticipate 2026 will probably be similar. So we appreciate everything you guys do, and, yeah, thank you.
Same, Russ. Thanks.
Yeah.
Great. Okay. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
The second?
Well, I'll second that motion. No one wants to leave unpopular.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, immediate adjourned.
See you.